It is.
They do more.
We have been, Roger's not here to be said of the police, it's such as regret.
I'm gonna be away from tomorrow until the twenty eighth.
All right, well, this meeting is now live. So we'll call this meeting to order, round council, April sixteenth, twenty twenty five, and we're starting at six o'clock P M. I'll call this meeting to order. And we have no members of the gallery present, so I don't have to read the lives of three more bills. All members of council are present, so thank you. Uh, we have two additions to the agenda that I know of, the first is a one in camera item to deal with negotiations. And the second is under new business, item five, Roman neural five, input from the April fourteenth, twenty twenty five public meet and greet that was held over the region. And that's for all members of council. Uh, we have not received any disclosures of conflict of internal interest. And if there are no changes to the agenda, it's approved by unanimous on that, but the change is noted. Are there any changes to the minutes? If there are more, we are also heard by unanimous consent. With your presentations this evening, but I understand that will change next month. Um, there's no further input, so we'll be able to go on to new business. And of course, our first order of business is the request for proposal shoreline restoration project manager, which you all have attacked. Over to you.
Sure, so in your agenda package is the request for decision. We received three proposals proposals for the shoreline restoration project management. Um, we spent time scoring them, so the score is also in your package. There's quite a range in pricing from eighty eight thousand up to over three hundred and three thousand dollars. Not sure if there's any questions.
No questions?
I will check my.
Something that we received through proposals.
Yeah. Yes, that is good, because it was looking like we were getting one. And then um, they kind of all came in with fifteen minutes of one another, so that was good that we had something to compare it with. Staff are very pleased um, with the proposal from C B West, was is our recommendation to council um, to accept that.
Really felt like that one understood the project intimately, the others were really classic project management proposals and not really, you know, experienced in some environmental stuff, but not in this specific one, whereas he W S has.
Yeah, they're kind of the lead um, for us in Nova Scotia on shoreline restoration, so.
And I think it's important that they're here in Nova Scotia also, because I forget what I was reading recently, and they were talking about the difference between things being applied even on the west coast and here. It's two oceans, but they're very different oceans, and we can't assume that same things will apply.
Um, yeah, I agree with you. Um, the uh, the biological experience of some of the um, projects applicants um, are quite impressive. Doctor, I'm not sure how to pronounce it, Prash D. Um, has experience with sediment transport. I expect that because of the title project that we already have issues with sediment transport. Am I right? So um, I think that's really vital that she has that experience, because when we were changing anything about water or land, we have to think about unintended consequences. And one of them for for this particular project would be sediment traveling where it's not supposed to be going, causing problems down down the river or the water. Yeah.
And that's why we have to do the three years of overall reporting. That's part of the environmental permits.
Yeah, and they did some adaptive monitoring, they had some issues at the Belcher, the Belcher Marsh. And they actually had uh, an area of it that just disappeared. And so they had about twenty two hectares of farmland that was active, that was in danger of being flooded. So they went in and they realized uh, that they needed to elevate it a little bit and use some different vegetation around there, and they saved that area, so it tells you how they can adapt to a possible failure, because you can't predict everything. And plus their locals, and they've worked with the foundation and K R P, so.
And I think in their proposal, just going from memory, that it, they did mention summers, but they also gave um, some ideas, like it wasn't like there's the risks, but they also gave options that they would, you know.
Yeah, it was assessment and management.
Yeah.
They need the active it does, which is a good decision making basis. I felt also like they would, because of their expertise, it would be less of a load on the town staff. Um, because you can rely a bit on that, whereas these other guys, you might have to do a lot of old.
Yeah, well, the, one of them had more experience with structures, like a bridge or a wharf, things like that, but not so much nature based solutions for what we're doing here.
Yeah, that was, they were by and far, I thought, the the right choice as well, I, there was, I mean, the notes that I made when I was reading, I was, I'm like, they kept, they kept coming to the top, so.
Like cost is pretty reasonable too, it's not the most expensive, even though they're the ones who bring most to the table.
Yeah, isn't that an interesting?
And communication with the public, which some, which is something they're, they have expertise with, which we're going to need. People are going to be wondering what's going on, what's the impact, what's going to be, what could happen here, is this a good thing, so that's going to be really good too.
So you ready for the questions?
Yeah.
Would you like something, we make a motion?
Um, I'm, except for my screen change size right when I said that. Um, I moved that council award the shoreline restoration to uh, to C B W E S Inc. In the amount of eighty eight thousand, four hundred and sixty two dollars and fifty cents, including H S T from the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six capital budget.
On paper. Lovely, thank you, everybody. One's a pleasure, request for decision for the volunteer award for twenty twenty. I guess to start, did anybody have any additions, because from the question wants, did we have any information to add? Does anybody have anything to add? Well, I did. Of what added? Um, I recognize all the significant applications from Jamie Holt, who was the mayor and deputy mayor. Um, I just note that there's a few things missing for the others. So for Steve Hobboldt, he did write two submissions that resulted in golf main environmental awards for environmental initiatives for the United Church and John Bottomland. For the progress report. And for Ann Crossman, she was also involved in music four hundred, she was administrator, she was involved in four hundredth anniversary. And also she was the queen, Queen Anne, for the three hundredth anniversary of the renaming of Annapolis for all. So just for completeness, I'm just adding those.
And we, we're selecting one, or are we ranking some?
You're ranking them all?
We're ranking them all.
And you know, it's passing them over to me.
And you're valid in your package and.
Yeah, so of course, Noah, of course, didn't know all of the details for all of the names, so that's why we were looking to see if they had anything to add.
I'm sorry, are we scoring them from most, from top to bottom or value wise, because it's.
Well, I'm puzzled by the one to five.
Yeah, so it's live being the highest, yeah. So you're scoring each person, so you can, you score each person from one to five.
Okay.
And then they'll just average out of the five.
So don't score them all five.
But it's a pleasure to have choice.
Yeah.
I can just, what Steve Hobboldt did in the E A C on Friday, go through how long he's been involved with that committee, that's a long time, he's been very a big part of helping to do some of the lines, so that's for her, yeah.
Yeah, so he was employed with, not volunteer, but he's volunteered definitely on many projects for the town. And part of E A C as well. And then, of course, we won't announce it until the May, because we want to make sure the person will have that.
It's only to have some.
It's wonderful to have a choice.
Yeah. Great, well, that one, that one's a good one.
So next on agenda, we do have um, an item, item three for the provincial capital assistance program, assistance, not assistant program. I think it's assistance program, does someone, does someone want to make a motion?
Well, first such was give you a little background on the project. Um, idea, so as everybody is aware, we still have a problem at the home hardware lift station. Um, we spent a lot of money over the last um, three years, probably trying to get that lift station up and running. And we're still having, um, when it's like high tide, extreme weather events, fast hard rain. Um, the lift station can't handle the flow. So um, we've been working with our engineers, able engineers, and public works have been trying to come up with a solution um, to reduce the flow, we've done like smoke tests and water tests, dye tests, and trying to find out if it's coming from roofs or um, it flowed from somewhere, or maybe the liquor store, because they were having a problem with sewage, like different things, so we don't really know where it's coming from, but we still have the issues. Um, so our proposal is that we do a Chapel Street force main extension, so they're going to do a force main that will pump it up to the gravity lead and bypass the home hardware lift station, so that all of the water from the wharf will go up Chapel Street, across the road, and get into the new one on the other side of the home hardware lift station, so it won't go into that. Um, so that most of the water will bypass it and then go up to the new infrastructure that we did three years ago. Um, so we're going to apply for that. The project is around three hundred and forty two thousand, and P cap um, is a fifty fifty grant. Fifty percent funds, fifty percent.
And it's, how much?
Three hundred and forty two thousand, four hundred and thirty one dollars.
Is that sort of a permanent solution? Or is that just a temporary workaround while?
No, that would be, hopefully, we thought the home hardware upgrade was a permanent solution. Um, and it has worked as well as we thought. Uh, so we're hoping that this will solve that.
So this would be a hundred and seventy one thousand that the town would have to put forward if we are successful.
Yeah.
And it would be in addition to our capital program, correct?
What's the timeline on that, Sandy?
The grant?
The work to be done. What would we be looking at?
Uh, we didn't even get that far, because if we don't have the money.
Then we don't have.
We probably won't be doing the project. Right?
Okay.
Um, usually, we apply for the grants um, first and see if we can get them, and then I'll look at the details, I imagine it would be hopefully four, five, six weeks, but I'm not sure, that's just a guess.
And these grants, you know, they don't have a, like a timeline or a deadline, you can apply for them
just every year, yeah, yeah, so the deadline for this grant is the twenty eighth of April.
Twenty third.
Yeah, and then it takes like four to six weeks to find out if we get it, and then it is, the work has to be done by March thirty first of this fiscal year.
And this has been a longstanding problem, the issue of the lift station.
Yeah.
Staff have been dealing with for multiple years, trying to.
Twenty years, probably.
Yeah. It's a big issue.
So we're, so today, we're just asking for um,
To be able to follow the.
File the grants and, and see where we go from there.
Great, thanks for that, right, so do we have a molder to build this? The second there?
Can I move it?
Is it for the discussion?
I move that council approved the application to the twenty twenty five provincial capital assistance program, P cap, for funding the Chapel Street force main extension. Second.
And are you going to include the cost?
At three hundred and forty two thousand.
Not this, because this is just.
This is just the.
Yeah, so we don't, yeah, we don't need them.
Yeah, sounds good, and we have a second there, we have a second there already, thank you. All in paper. Like, that's closer to solving a big problem. And next, we have a sustainable community challenge fund, and over to you again.
Yeah, so this grant is um, due on Tuesday, the twenty second. Um, this one, we are applying, it's the Sustainable Communities Challenge Fund. Um, and we are applying for the shoreline restoration project for the, the balance that we're out. Um, so it's just the same project that we're currently working on. Um, but we did unfortunately get news yesterday that we did not um, get the grant funding. So we were not successful in that one, so we really need to apply for this grant, we still haven't heard back from intact, but.
How much was grid for?
Um, I think six hundred thousand or something, yeah. Uh, I think two hundred thousand.
More, fifty six percent funding now.
Eighty percent, eighty percent. Yeah, L C A, we got eighty percent. Yeah, like just the great funding would have been way more than what we actually had outstanding that we needed to cover, in order for us to reach try to keep track of zero, zero contribution area.
So do we have a number?
Uh, I move that council supports the application for the Sustainable Communities Challenge Fund for funding the shoreline restoration project.
I'll second that. On paper. We have um, just some input from what council has heard of the April fourteen public event, the public meet and greet. So just uh, open time to record your thoughts.
I think it was a wonderful opportunity to engage with the community, I thought we had a wonderful turnout. It was fairly well attended, and it was great to hear sort of the various kinds of input um, around the strategic plan and some input, and I certainly encourage people to send feedback to Sandy, if they had any questions, but I think people were um, excited to see sort of a working document on where priorities sort of were landing for the upcoming year, and uh, yeah. I, before anybody else caught there, I got collared about our tax increase. So I explained that we hadn't had one in many years, and that we um, you know, we've done everything we can with the budget we have so far in order to keep the services at the level that we need to do something, and I mentioned that in other municipalities, they're seeing ten to twelve percent increases, and the person was happy after that, so. Um, and um, yeah, I spent a lot of time with one person just talking about what is the council, and what it would do, and how does it work, and.
I really enjoyed um, that it was just a meet and greet, and sit and talking to people in town, and them giving us a little bit of feedback about things they'd like to see, so again, directing them back to Sandy. And like Heather said, just an opportunity for them to take a look at our strategic plan. Some of them had some specific questions, but um, we tried to answer them the best we could, and or refer them to Sandy.
I thought it was wonderful um, and got a lot of, I got a lot of great feedback, and a lot of really interesting questions. Um, I was kind of laughing before we started meeting this evening, because I was saying to Sandy, one of the bits of feedback that I got was that we needed to change the name, because they've already met and greeted us. And so they thought if we're going to keep doing this, we should change the name to something else, so I thought that was kind of cute. But really good topics of conversation, I had uh, people who wanted to talk about sidewalks on Victoria Street. Um, I had a lot, every person I talked to asked about the war and didn't understand um, what was actually happening there, didn't understand the public notice that had been put out, and so there was a, not in an unhappy sort of way, but they just simply didn't understand it, so it was really a great opportunity to talk about what that meant and what was happening. Um, many questions about the waterfront project, uh, including a lot of questions about the funding. And again, trying to understand better what that meant to them personally. Um, the strategic plan, great feedback, again, lots of people said, happy to see the document. I had two different people say, it's a little dry. So I thought that was kind of funny, I don't know how we make it undry, but there you go. Um, yeah, pictures. Um, the beautification came up three or four times, which I thought was really interesting. Um, and one suggestion that I think is incredible, isn't necessarily for the town, but maybe we could help identify somebody for whom this could be a suggestion. Um, was a skills inventory of seniors or retired people who may have very unique sense of skills that they want to put to work in the community in a volunteer capacity. And I thought that there is a kind of a database that exists that works for Nova Scotia and New Brunswick. Um, but I don't know how much uptake there has been of it, so I thought, it just was a very interesting suggestion about how we have such great resources, and some of those people are on our town committees. Um, and we've seen that, uh, you know, John Bottom is a great example of that. Um, where, you know, such a unique set of skills brings to bear an incredible monetary value of contribution, but it's all done in volunteer basis. So I thought that was a really interesting thing, and then the same thing that Simone mentioned about the tax increases, I had a few people wanting to understand better what that meant. And the biggest question was, what does that really mean to most people, like on a monthly basis? Or, you know, yearly basis, what does that sixth sense translate into? So we had a good conversations about that as well.
Everybody was there, so I provided to you, Don.
Okay, yeah. And I just had, somebody was asking about volunteer opportunities, so we appointed them to the website for committees.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
And I will say that that has already been followed up, and we now have somebody that is stepping up for the audit committee. So that was brought at the May meeting to appoint them.
Wonderful, wonderful, but we could actually see a tangible outcome from our no longer meet and greet. I, I suggested to Sandy maybe like coffee with council or something, but I just thought it was very funny that they pointed that out, that they'd already met us and greeted us. He's with council, yeah.
Lovely that council has brought all the refreshments and everything, so that was very much appreciated by everybody. And I made a point of saying that to give us. So thank you, so that's all recorded, I'll log you with Liz, Don. So now we come to have four.
Yes. So unfortunately, staff have been struggling to um, move forward with um, the fencing around the work. Um, finding a contractor um, was very difficult, and we only found one, and it was out of our price range. So staff have put um, a lot of effort into finding out other options, we have also talked to our insurance provider. Um, the whole um, reason for the fencing is to reduce, reduce the level of risk on part of the town. Uh, of course, we do have insurance, but the risk is higher than the, the level of insurance that we have. Um, so we've come up with a wooden bear barricade, I'm going to call it a barricade, not a fence, that will put up with rope, and um, staff have done like a little sample here to show council tonight. Um, this, the stone bottoms are very, I think they're about twenty five pounds, so we think that it's not just going to blow over in the wind out there, because the wharf is very windy. Um, we're going to put some lights around probably every other. Um, and this is still within the budget that you've already pre-approved, um, which I have included the motion above, just to remind everybody how much money we have, so we can do this at a lot less price, and I think it'll be more fitting, and it's on the much better. The, the wharf itself, um, we still will have to put signs up on it saying not to climb, not to cross the barrier, risk of fall, although sun edge will still be up. Um, so just, so I guess I'm coming to you today, because unfortunately, we cannot open the wharf up until we have something out there, so I'm asking for another two months um, extension, if it's done within the month, one month, we'll open it as soon as we can, like as once everything is up and safe, we'll open it, we won't wait till the, you know, if it's the end of June, we won't wait until that date opens up, we'll do that as soon as we can. Um, and this is something that staff can do, so public works can make the um, stands in house, and then just go ahead and put it, put it up, now we're not putting it along the actual edge of the wharf, it's going to be like three or five feet in from the edge, so that even if someone does pass the barrier, there's not a chance that they're just going to pass it and fall in to the river, they'll still be on the wharf. But it's to help mitigate that kind of risk, so um, when the staff are installing it, if it's that high tide, they will have to wear their life jackets uh, because they're working on the work for O H N S, so um, that's certainly in council base.
And Donald satisfied O H S?
Yes.
Right. Um, yeah, leaving, just looking at them, is there any concern about Vandal's pushing them over?
Well, there'll be like sixty of them all tied together, so I don't think so.
Yeah. I mean, they could do that with the fencing if they wanted to as well, so.
I will say that I, I use a similar uh, construction, thank you, a similar setup um, out uh, on a property at the shore, and it will withstand, it withstands the winds out there, which are comparable to the winds that you would face on the wharf, so at least the way that's structured, I use the exact same pieces that are on the bottom and the same size wood, so I think you wouldn't have an issue with, with, at least with the wind, right, which shouldn't be uh, of concern.
I just think it's much more attractive, I think it's a great solution.
Yeah, I think it's a better solution, yes, yeah, much better. One question I would have is, you said three to five feet. I, I'd be looking at that fairly closely, um, just because I think with the greater distance, I mean, I understand why you would have some distance, but I think the more distance you would have between the edge and where that is, the greater likelihood you would have of people going around it. So.
Well, they won't, yeah, they won't be able to go around, and they'd have to go through.
Well, that's kind of what I mean, like they would just kind of go through and to the other side anyways.
So have like something going that way to.
Well, no, I'm just thinking that if you don't give them a ton of space, then they're less inclined to bother going through.
But the good thing is, is that if they fall over, they're not falling into the water, and taking other ones by them.
I lean towards the three foot side than the five foot side, I guess is. But I, I, yeah, I do think it's better than our previous solution.
Yeah, and I just, and in your agenda package, uh, just want to draw your attention to what the um, insurance broker said about closing the wharf in the wintertime. So in this, we'll deal with it probably in November, but just to draw your attention that if the boardwalk, if the the, the wharf is open in the wintertime, we have to plow it, maintain it, and salt it. Because if someone is out there and slips and falls, they can sue us. So they are recommending that we do close the wharf every winter. Like we did this year, just at the parking spots and down, and, and then keep that as a going forward, so, but we'll discuss that.
At a later date.
Next, like, November, we'll start kind of deciding.
Yeah, because one of the question that came up for me about that was about the the use at your own risk kind of things that you see everywhere that comes up in the wintertime, and this is unmaintained, use at your own risk kind of thing. On this is unmaintained, use at your own risk kind of thing.
Yeah.
Because we have them now on sidewalks throughout town, yeah, the boardwalk and the sidewalks down in Victoria Street.
And it's so fortuitous that we have a new insurance provider who's more amenable to just saying these things also.
No, yeah.
Absolutely. So we have a draft motion.
I can get my glasses on my face. I move that council extends the wharf closure to June thirtieth to install the wooden barrier. Um, should we say unless it's ready earlier? You just wanna keep it simple.
It's up to you. I like I, I will. Tell you that we will open it as soon as it is open.
Could say that or earlier if possible.
Yeah, but I meant, okay. I move the council extends the wharf closure to June thirtieth, twenty twenty five or earlier. With installation of the um, wooden barrier. A second.
One question before, but I just realized I should have asked earlier, um. How does the uh, the wheel guard replacement fly into this at all?
Yeah, so the, we have the wood now.
Okay.
For the bumper stops, whatever they're called. But we haven't got, we only have one contractor that's put a submission in for the welding part. So we're still waiting for two more uh, welding quotes and then hopefully that will get done as well.
And but we don't have any delay based on that, like like for the rest of it.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Because we're not gonna fix the wooden. The thing, just the ones where the parking lot is, and we won't move the rocks. Because the rocks potentially are stopping them now. So we won't move the rocks until they're fixed. So it doesn't, it won't hold up.
That sounds good. Thank you. It's a comment, not a question, but I was reading the natal day um, minutes from two weeks ago and they said that. The wharf was gonna be closed, so they couldn't hold the fireworks out there. Was that corrected?
I, well, I spoke to the uh, chair and she, she sent me an email and I said, well, that is not true though. The wharf will be open as soon as possible. Whether, I don't know where they're gonna have the fireworks displays, but they definitely could have.
But they have dealt with Parks Fana and it sounds like if they had to go to the Parks Fana, they could.
But they would have to have insurance.
Yes.
On their own, not the town is not applying insurance for.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So all in favor of the motion? Motion carried, thank you. Great. So now we're on to recommendations from board with commission. So the operating budget is that first.
Do you want to? Yeah.
I will, shall I start then?
Sure.
I move the council approves the three million, sorry. Three million thirty-three thousand six hundred and seventy-five dollar town operating budget for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six with tax rate. At a dollar seventy-six and three dollars and twenty-six cents respectively, respectively. For residential and commercial. New fire rate will be added that was formerly included in the overall tax rate. That new rate for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six will be set at point zero zero one zero four two. And will be broken down, or broken out on the tax bills moving forward.
All in favor? And it's a historic budget. I think it's the first time it's gone over three years. And it is now just over. So it's very historic, so well done. All right.
All right, so. Me next.
And what about you?
I move the council approved the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six general capital budget for one million three hundred thirty-seven, six hundred and twenty-seven. Dollars. My second that.
This is also historically. It is. So all in favor?
Well, that's a big job. You've got your uh. We're going to swap order here just for a moment. Um, I move that council approved the salary administration policy. Number two zero two five dash zero nine dated April twenty twenty-five.
I'll second that.
Hate to say it, another historic thing. All in favor?
I'll move that council repeal the environmental advisory committee policy number. Twenty twenty-four dash zero two and replace with the environment advisory committee policy number twenty twenty-five dash zero seven. Dated April twenty twenty-five.
I second that.
Another historic, who knew all these people wanted to be on the environment.
Momentous meeting.
You have to recognize the moment, right?
Absolutely.
All right.
Um, I move that council appoint Mariah Robertson to the environment advisory committee for a term of two years until December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six.
I second that. All in favor?
I.
I. Lovely. So we move on to planning and heritage.
I move the council approve the applicant. Five eight to two six four Saint George Street, be given heritage approval to change. Window and door materials to aluminum and steel respectively while maintaining. The existing look of the space currently occupied by the coffee shop as detailed in the application. E R two five dash zero five dash H E R, providing the requirements of the land use by law are met.
I'll second that. All in favor?
I move that council approve the applicant at eighty-nine Victoria Street to be given heritage approval to change window insert material to vinyl. As detailed in the application air twenty-five dash zero seven dash H E R. Providing the requirements of the land use by law are met.
I'll second that. All in favor?
And for the marketing and economic development committee, I move that council considers dissolving the marketing and economic development committee. And developing proposals for the future within the context of the town's draft strategic plan. And that council make a decision regarding reassigning responsibilities for the development of proposals.
I'll second that.
So this one should have a little discussion.
Yeah.
There's um, a lot to it. Um, so I don't know, somebody from medic want to take the lead?
Uh, well, I'm, yes, I will uh, just click into the report. Um, did we include that in that report? Okay, yeah, he's got it in quick reference. So, um. There's discussion about whether or not um, medic itself. Should continue in its current format, um. Because there was recognition that it wasn't actually meeting the mandates that were outlined in the policy. That have been for years, not just, this isn't just a recent thing. So it's been a long, onward thing and. Um, as part of that meeting, what was created was an exit report, um. Kind of looking at the strategic dissolution of the marketing and economic development committee. Um, and that the committee itself um, recommends to council that, that they formally dissolve that committee. And then look at kind of the future. Um, what might. Take the place of that committee or where those responsibilities are already being picked up by other committees. Um, and what, what some future iteration might look like, but simply that what was existing right now wasn't. Was not necessarily meeting the, the policy and the mandate within that policy.
I think there was discussion around the fact that the mandate was extremely broad and.
Yes.
Using, including community development, economic development and. I forgot what the third development was, but that's an awful lot to ask upon um.
Population.
Of um, volunteers. And furthermore, a lot of it's really covered under some other committees already, so it's almost duplicative and we just. The feeling was that there might be a more efficient way to handle things. Um, we wanted to make it clear that we obviously still consider all of those things important and a priority. Um, but we want maybe to focus the activities in the appropriate committee spots. See if that means we need to commit, create some kind of committee or not that would meet any needs that are missing. Um, and and, you know, create efficiency for town staff and and for the committee structure also.
Yeah, I think, I think that pretty much sums up.
Oh, and there was reference in it to the strategic plan, that's the new council strategic plan. So we may wish to revisit the strategic plan document to, to address. Whatever council feels.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that captures pretty much.
I thought it was an excellent report.
And it was maybe like, just the only other thing that I kind of noticed in the discussion was that people were often. Frustrated with the committee because of that broad mandate, they expected it to do things that it wasn't mandated to do. Capable of doing, didn't have the right expertise, so that was another reason to.
For the budget, so for example, like everybody thinks that the town is marketing. And we don't really.
It isn't there.
Marketing person or a marketing budget or, right, so I think the expectations of the public have been.
Um. And I was, I would also just like to acknowledge that this is no reflection on the committee itself or the committee member. They've been diligent, they've worked hard, they've been committed and and were grateful for their. For their willingness to step up, but I, I think as, you know, kind of to Sybil's point, that really. A bit of a rock and a hard place when they have this huge mandate that was, that they couldn't quite hone in on and. Accomplish and accomplish. It was kind of set up to be a bit frustrating for everybody. And so I think that this is just a great opportunity to. Realign or to right-size what we need to do.
It was started in two thousand and four, so.
Yeah.
And I think it, uh, the fact that it had two subcommittees reporting to it, twinning and natal day, which are both huge enterprises. Kind of tells you the expectations were not, the expectations were probably too much.
Yeah.
To cha- uh, so there's a marketing and economic development committee and twinning and natal day.
Yeah.
And I think that's shown that it's huge because.
And we can create channels for those things to continue to report to council, but they don't have to. That committee doesn't have to exist in order for those things to continue reporting.
One thing the report did not mention in terms of overlap is the fact that the C A O and her critical accountability she's tasked for. Population growth and business growth.
Mm-hmm.
So that's another area of overlap that wasn't addressed in the report that exists. Because that's what staff are trying to do.
Yeah.
That's built into their jobs. So I think the overlapping theme is important.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because.
Get things done.
Even the marketing opportunities, they primarily come into you, they doubt, you being the C A O for anybody who can't see what I'm pointing at. But they primarily come into the C A O and not into medic. So it wasn't even coming to that committee, those opportunities. They were already going directly to, to the C A O, which then was putting it out to staff as it should be. But that wasn't, there wasn't even a need for that to be clearing anything through.
We acknowledged that a lot of the economic development stuff was also happening as a result of activities that. The town is undertaking such as the grant applications, the ability to create um, economic opportunity through those. For people in the town, so.
One, one last thing that I think I, I should have mentioned about the discussions that were had was that. It was also identified that a lot of the businesses in the community. Want some kind of business development service, but that's not, again, something that medic was. Established or capable of providing to the businesses. And so with the loss of the Board of Trade, that the reality is, is that if the business community wants that kind of service, then, then. They will have to, to kind of identify how that might look to them. One possibility is, is for representatives in the business community to be approaching the Annapolis Valley Chamber of Commerce. Um, because they do provide a lot of those services to their members and they do a very good job promoting the entire valley region. So that is a possible solution to one aspect that people might feel like they're going to miss by with the loss of the medic committee.
Motion on board.
I think we have.
Which was already made.
That was our discussion.
Second, my second done, yeah.
All right, so.
Sorry, who seconded? I did.
She wants the marketing committee, market, development committee further, the report and. And their service and the fact that we need to acknowledge the service of the members. Which will be done, we'll figure out that's been done. Now we get on to the exciting area of the comments. Um, so now my report, I'll just add that, um. And who are I, C A O and I suffered through a follow-on. What the province is going to do on postal protection. And I won't go into the detail because we'll give you that in the report, but um, we both attended the call today. Um, so basically more bylaws are coming, novel bylaws for all municipal units. Um, it's a million dollars going to N F F M in support of implementation of whatever we do on postal. On top of that, um, another amount of three hundred and forty-four thousand for a support person. I did ask on your behalf if uh, that, that million dollars could, um, whatever a bunch of municipal units. Got together and collaborated on a bylaw, would that be good use of the money? And they said yes. So, uh, there's an opportunity there for us to lobby for. Uh, a bylaw. Anyway, I'm not, I'm not sure where that would go, but uh, there were a lot of questions about it. There was a lot of pushback about. Why the, the uh, province did not adopt the legislation, but they didn't, so that's passed. So now we're dealing with it. And some questions that came up about how this million dollars, three hundred and forty-four thousand will be spent, but that's for another day. So that's just a synopsis and I will summarize that and put it in a future report. And I'll give the C A O's report.
Uh, so my report was in the agenda package. I also have been, um, lots of the. I must say, C A Os have a meeting, um, trying to meet. Um, so I, there's been a lot of time spent. On that and we have another meeting now again next week. We were supposed to have one today. So that's, um. Slowly trying to um, find a resolution for the Valley Way Stinkings Transit. The pilot project that we started two years ago is almost completed. Um, I would like to say that the playground work is moving fast down there. Um, if you haven't kind of seen it, it's um. Big changes are happening, so hopefully, um, by. Well, I'm not sure what time the, the contractors will be done, but then there's still more work that has to be done. Um, so hopefully. Um, they'll be on track to open up in early spring. It's, it's spring now. I'm not sure if early spring, maybe late spring. Not really sure when that is gonna open it, I don't wanna.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's a singular question I keep getting asked.
I know, it's, yeah, but. But they might, definitely you can see some progress down there, which is great. The parking lots, um. By the skateboard park has been moving along um, quickly. Um. Can't think of anything else. The shoreline restoration project has been, we still been, like I said, we. Rents, uh, still got two grants that are due, so we're still applying for grants. And I don't know if you have any questions.
But there are two important things in your report and it's for notebook King's Transit, that's a huge issue for us. And the other one is Public Works, the uh, sewage treatment plant. So I like those two things. We have. Some serious things in there to consider, but thank you for very comprehensive report.
Yeah.
A lot of work. So next on the reports, you have a planning services report. You just stop me if there's anything. Um. It's a healthy number, even if it's not comparable. My only question about the water reports is print size because. I do have the magnifying glass at home, but I can't always find it because I can't.
So on this list, of course, the, the, the wastewater would see greater than.
Yeah.
So that's where our wastewater is not in compliance, we're over.
That's.
Down you, so that's like. Daily work has been, been done from the power works team over there. Um, we've been getting the contractors, back and forth with contractors, water testing. We even sent some samples to Ontario. Lots of money has been sent. Um, with no solutions, the, um, it's actually the contractor, it's getting very frustrated because they keep saying that their system works. And the labs keep coming back and saying, no, it's not working, obviously. Look at the numbers, right? Um, so.
And you, you sent it to Ontario, so you've got another lab saying that, so it's not calibration of the lab.
And you, you sent it to Ontario, so you've got another lab saying that, so it's not calibration of the lab equipment.
No, because we send it to the province for the lab, so, and then we sent the other sample to Ontario. Um, so we're almost to the point that um we are escalating this to whoever we can because we're not getting any satisfaction um from the contractor of the equipment. I, the equipment, it is old, it's probably twenty old technology, they still stand by it, they say it, it a hundred percent works, but obviously it's not working.
Very responsive to us.
Correct. So I'm hoping that this does not mean that we are going to come to you and say that we need a new disinfection system because that will be another expense that we are not ready for and it's not accounted for in this budget. Um, but lots of work has been going on behind the scenes, so some of the, like because the public works has been stretched very thin lately on all of these things, some of the other things aren't getting done, so just like these are, this is a priority right here, so lots of hours have been put into that.
Well, the good thing is we have not experienced odor issues over the last while, but summer is coming.
Yeah, and we have been very clear with the Department of Environment, so they know, we've been communicating with them as well, so they're not, they are in the know of what we're doing, so.
So if the, if the equipment is twenty years old, how long is it expected to work?
Nobody is saying, the contractor keeps saying it's not their equipment, their lights work, their their system works. It's guaranteed to work, but we keep showing results that it's not working.
So they're not asking for guarantee.
That's right, yeah. They even sent out like brand new bulbs for us, or resold bulbs for free, and no change. So.
And we're unexplained things happening at the plant from years ago. There have been unexplained incidents where the loom is just totally dried up. We don't explain each other, nobody's ever been able to figure out why it happened.
Yeah.
Yeah, so there's things we don't understand about the plant. Anyway, staffer, we're doing hard on that, thank you. You know, we have a very complete report from Medic. That are in questions for Council McDonald's report. And we have the subcommittee report, I think they were form part of your report, both from twinning. Beautiful sponsorship work done by the natal day.
Yeah, yeah, it's great.
Very, very, I mean, I was enticed to, not on behalf of council, but on behalf of my little business, I was enticed to go and spend a little money on a little sponsorship, just because I thought it was so well done. So, yeah, it was very inviting, put it that way. Okay. So that's Medic, now on to planning and heritage, Council Meyer, you have your report. Are there any questions for council or? It's wonderful to see you looking at that Bollersdale House, this is great city. To read on the
Yeah.
Issues.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's great, so we have a committee that is thinking about this. Okay, for the police, count for casting.
Um, so we didn't need.
Yeah, so we, so there you go. And we have a library report as well, and we have the friends of library report that came in with it. Any questions for, again, Council McDonald?
I'll just say that that mini report is something that they'll be en- enacting on a regular, not a regular basis, you won't get one every month, but but uh they found it in in their bylaws that they actually had a requirement that they were supposed to be doing that, and so now they are.
Thank you for that, okay.
And we also sent in our requests.
Yes, um, the town's your class.
That was in your report.
I don't, no, because the meeting's tomorrow night, that's why. So, yeah, the the a Annapolis Valley Regional Library Board meeting is actually tomorrow evening, so that's why there's no official report on that in this, but just to say that the town has submitted a request um to the the board to um uh review the the uh dispersment policy to bring it in line with what the town's M O U with the library board says, which is that they are supposed to be part of the creation of that dispersment policy. So um hopefully that will will be addressed, but they, I will have a more fulsome report for me.
Great. Next, we have uh I M S A interim board and of course uh the I M S A group produces themselves, King's Transit and Solos Valley Way, so you have that. That's lovely, it's nice to work for everybody else. And it makes sure that the counselors know what's going on with that. Um, for the color report, you have my comments that were included at tab twelve, so I won't pull them again.
And there's lots of things. Environment Advisory Committee, because it was Friday. And, you know, and we basically was, the two, two of the potential three new members were welcomed and we kind of gave them a bit of the history of the Environmental Advisory Committee and it's gorgeous, so.
It's lovely to see all these new members.
Yeah.
Definitely, great. Okay, and then on to uh friends of the pool, I think we're at. Friends of the pool, who gave the report?
That was me. Yeah. Also just wanted to highlight too that the um the last paragraph there about that the pool has um is going to be partnering with the skills um program at AWAC. Build um change stalls for high-traffic times. So I think utilizing skills within the community and getting the high school student involved is a fabulous opportunity.
I thought that was wonderful.
Yeah.
It's great to see all this activity for schools.
Yeah, yeah. And it's going to make it easier for families, you know, changing and all that sort of stuff. Um, so I think, you know, it's um, it's important to highlight what a wonderful um area and community we're going to have in the summer months. I think we all missed the pool last year.
There was a little panic moment, though. Um, Anna Kate Emma made the date that all of the um grants were released for the students. And she didn't get an email. And she was like, we didn't get an email, did you get an email? And I was like, oh, I don't know, I lucked, and I lucked and I was like, yeah, I got mine at three o'clock. Because I didn't get an email. And then after she went and it was in her junk email.
Relieved that they got their.
Oh, good.
For student funding.
Too often for life, I'm sure.
And Anna Kate?
There is no Anna Kate.
Um, so maybe we can do that proactively on future agenda, because we know there's no meeting, it's just not that. Uh, Remo, we have a report from Council Meyer.
That was very comprehensive meeting.
I want to know who got the new radios, because it said two for Annapolis. We, is that two for Annapolis Royal?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
I had to go to T M R training.
Okay.
For training.
Yeah, Ken and I were there and we get two radios, one will stay here at public, uh, here at Public Works.
One will stay at Public Works, someone will stay here at Town Hall.
I just want to make sure we got our two radios.
We will get them, yes.
And the good message from that is Annapolis County is in good shape for an emergency, we're in probably better shape than other areas. Which is really nice because we always think of the western region being a bit neglected in some areas, but Brynord has his finger on the pulse of emergencies.
Looking after. It is nice to feel cared for in an emergency.
We are well cared for.
Yeah, and he's, like, he's been a long-term commitment.
Yeah, and he's now full-time, so.
Yeah.
He's rotten.
That's good.
So that brings us to the end of our regular event. Can you tell Donna how many people are?
I can tell you. Um, let's give me one shake of a lamb's tail. All right. Or maybe, you know, more than one shake, I just have to pull the the meeting off.
Well, some lambs are slower than others.
It's, it's very true.
It's an old lamb. Uh, we have five people viewing. Anyway, thank you for the people who were attending online, thank you for attending. And on that note, I want to contain a motion to go in camera to discuss. We have one in camera, um, item, which is the minutes of March. Oh, we're just going out. Personal matters, and we have one matter.